We saw the firemen.
Just wait.
Really nailing it?
Just wait.
Okay, we're starting off a little bit too chatty here. We've got a set of minutes to approve. Does anyone have any modifications to that that weren't already made?
Nope.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve them.
Cool. Go ahead on. All in favor?
Aye.
Cool, those passed unanimously.
Just a second just.
Sarah. Sorry, I didn't say that back out. Next on our agenda is public participation for those of you who would like to speak to us as something that's not on the board tonight and it looks like there's nobody out there who's not involved directly with items on our agenda.
They can speak too. Even if they are employees of the fire district, they can. Did you guys have anything you want to say about anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we're good.
Know any good jokes?
Yeah.
So then we have one call up to talk about. We do not have a staff person here to talk about that tonight though, so if you have any questions on it, you can email them and then call up later if you'd like to. So we don't really want to ask questions right now since no one can answer them. So we can skip straight to our public hearing item, which is one thing, which is a public hearing and recommendation to city council for acceptance of the Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan and action on the proposed amendment of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan's Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan summary, which you guys all know, we've been through this routine a few times. We've reviewed a master plan and then because that master plan has impact on the language in the comp plan, we have to make a modification of that summary as well. So we're going to start off with an application or a presentation by city staff, well broader city staff, I guess, maybe it's not quite that personalized. And then if anyone shows up to speak to us, we'll take questions from the public and ask questions back and forth. And this one can be a little bit more of a dialogue than a normal site plan review kind of hearing, so take it away.
Great, thanks Brian. So I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Chris Franglolo, I work in the comprehensive planning department and I also work on coordinating all of the city's department master plans and the annual capital improvement program. Couple other folks here with me tonight, so I'll allow Michael to introduce himself and then he'll introduce a few of the staff members in the audience.
Sure, thank you, Chris. For the record, good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Calderazzo, I'm the fire chief. With me today, I brought a couple of members of the department's senior planning team and administration. In white is our deputy chief of support services, Holger Dura, and next to him on his left, on his right actually, my left, is Devin Billingsley, our senior budget analyst. So I brought them with me today, in case there are questions around, you know, the department, the process, or even some of the numbers that are in the presentation. So they're here to help with that.
So it's a quick rundown of the agenda for this evening. We'll jump into a staff presentation here shortly. Any questions the board have, after the presentation, we'll be happy to answer those for you all and then we'll hold a public hearing and then finally move in to the planning board deliberation on the two action items before the board this evening. Before we do jump into the fire master plan specifically, I wanted to just touch base and update the board on where some of our other department master plans are at. And so as you read through this list, you'll notice that two have been accepted in 2019. That was the open space and mountain parks master plan, as well as the transportation master plan. The board saw these and recommended acceptance to city council back in fall of 2019. There's two that are currently underway. This includes the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, as well as the FAM, or Facilities and Asset Management, Master Plan. Two will be kicking off here shortly in Q1 of 2020. These include the Police Department and the Comprehensive Flood and Storm Water Utility Master Plan, bringing us to a total of four master plans over the next year and a half or so. So there are quite a few master plan updates underway, in addition to the one that's before you this evening. I also want to provide a bit of context about what exactly are department master plans? What do they do? What do they strive for? And so really what it comes down to at a high level, a department master plan is really attempting to provide a vision for the future of that department. It acts as a bridge between it, the master plan, and the BVCP. It's a common city framework for planning and delivery of services, facilities, and programs, and really is the basis for capital planning. So this image that you see to the right, we always reference it as the umbrella diagram. The board's probably seen it in multiple documents before, it's in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. But really what it's attempting to do is show the inner relationships between all of our city policy guiding documents, including the Community Sustainability Framework, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And these two plans really are, what they're doing is really the policy backbone and policy guidance for all of our department master plans. And then you can see sandwiched in there is the department master plans, underneath that is the capital improvement program. So department master plans are really directly influencing the development of the annual capital improvement program every year. All city department master plans are governed by what we call the City Plans and Projects Handbook. This handbook essentially describes a city's process for master planning and capital projects. The figure that you see to the right here is really meant to depict the general phases that are outlined in this handbook. And you can see we're at phase one, which is master planning, and that really includes the highest amount of community dialogue to identify policies and projects for that master plan. Now I want to be very explicit about what the planning board's role is with master plans. And so I bring the diagram, the umbrella diagram, up one more time because I think it really isn't related with what the planning board's role in master planning is. So the first thing, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, the planning board reviews all master plans specifically for consistency with the goals and policies outlined in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. It reviews master plans to ensure the coordination and integration among departmental programs and goals. It ensures the plan identifies future capital needs. And really this is a result of the planning board's role in the development and the approval of the capital improvement program every year, typically in August, as it gets tracked with the budget every year as well. And then finally, the planning board makes a recommendation to city council on the acceptance of the master plan, as we've alluded to. Sort of as a reminder here, the board will be taking two separate actions this evening. The first is to make a recommendation to city council on the acceptance of the master plan, as I had mentioned, but also the second, as Brian had mentioned, is to look at the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, master plan summary for this department, and amend the Boulder Valley Conference Plan. This is largely a housecleaning item, but it is something that we have to do. This is a two-body decision, meaning that it is just planning board and city council that have to take action on it, and does not include the county. And this was included as attachment A to your guys' memo packet. So per the City Plans and Projects Handbook, once again, the key issues for consideration tonight really are as follows. Is the master plan consistent with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan? Does the master plan outline BVCP service standards and a plan to meet those in the future? And then finally, are the capital needs and funded sources outlined in the master plan? So it's really these three key issues that the remainder of the presentation is sort of organized by and is really what the three key issues are that the planning board should be directing their conversation as we get to a recommendation later in the evening. With that, I want to turn it back over to Michael. Michael's going to give you guys a bit more of an overview of the fire department, what the fire department does, and a little bit more background information on the master planning process, how we've gotten from point A to where we are this evening.
Thanks, Chris. So what I'll do now is put the whole master plan process in context of where we are today as one of the city's core services. Before I get there, we thought it'd be good to share at least the mission and vision that were actually changed during this process, that the planning team changed it to. The bigger one, I think, is the vision itself, because the planning team coalesced around the idea that every one of our goals ought to be around what the customer experiences, as opposed to talking about ourselves. Now, I am going to talk about the department, but the master plan itself, you'll notice as we go through it, is really designed to talk more to when I call 911, or when I need assistance from this particular city service, what do I get? What do I get for my tax dollars? We hope that becomes pretty clear. But the mission itself kind of explains that we're more than just a fire department. So the name may be a little misleading now. Fire rescue means more than just wait till you call 911 before we're doing anything. So you'll see as we go through our list of services what that entails. I won't read them to you, but if you look on the right-hand side of that slide, you can see that from soup to nuts, the idea is not only do we want to shift more and more away from response, which is really when someone is having a bad day, or our community is having a bad day, but more on the lines of preventing and trying to reduce risk in the community. So we're shifting more and more as a service generally across the country, but here in Boulder as well. The department itself has 124 full-time equivalents. Of those, in any given year, it's between about 100 and, I'd say around 100 actual, what we call structural firefighters, who also provide some of those other response services. And then we have eight wildland responders whose job it is to prepare our community for the wildland risks that we face all the time. And that last piece, eight community risk staff are the ones that go out and do code enforcement, prevention-related activities, community education, things like that. So that's the breakdown of the department. We have seven fire stations plus one station located at the reservoir that is actually our wildland response station, or we call it the cache. So I thought this might be helpful to show that the department of 50 years ago was probably one more around fire and wildfire. Now, most of our responses are emergency medical. As a matter of fact, structured fire probably represents less than 5% of our total call volume. The rest of it is all related to the average emergency medical call to 911. We have 25.8 square miles that we protect of direct incorporated city limits. And then, or the reason we have wildland responders is because of the open space around us. We work with our partners and other fire districts to help protect open spaceland from the threat of wildfire. And some of those statistics are on the right there. As far as the budget goes, this year, it's around $23 million. In that really, really dark blue, you can see that most of our resources go to the response part of things. That's what operations is. And the remainder goes either supporting that, there's a small sliver there that is related to our community risk reduction activities. My personal goal as fire chief over time is to increase that community risk reduction allocation, so we adhere to the old men Franklin maxim of an ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure. So spending money in community risk reduction pays far more in terms of benefits in the community than having to respond. Of course, we will always need to spend money on response, that's just reality. So let me take you through the process. This is actually, coming in front of you now in 2020, the beginning here, is really the culmination of about two years of work. But if you count the original master plan from five years ago, or actually it's seven years now, 2012 was our last master plan update. At the five-year mark in 2017, we began the process to update the master plan. And as you know, they're really 10-year plans, but kind of designed to be revisited at the halfway mark. We fell behind a little bit, but it was a good, for a good reason. The city has begun piloting a lot more community engagement. They did it with open space. We signed on for the same thing. So it actually allowed us to fully, fully engage around this topic. It's not one that, of course, rose the level of engagement that open space may have, but we got tons of input. And it was actually kind of fun. I mean, personally, speaking with folks who don't normally think of what we do and how we do it, and engaging with them. And so we took all that feedback, it all found its way into the master plan, and we got the team together in September, October-ish of last year to actually take all of that input, put it together, and the plan you have in front of you today is the culmination of that work and activity. This is just a little bit about the engagement. We ended up trying to use every possible in-person interview, and we had an online survey as well. We used every city engagement opportunity to physically visit with folks, and we even handed out postcards and encouraged people to get online and let us know what they felt. And a lot of that is reflected in our master plan. So without belaboring that point, let me kind of take you to the big areas that the planning team had us put down as our strategic areas of focus. The first two probably make the most sense, because that's what we know, we're known for. Number one is all hazards response and emergency medical services. That is what we're organized for, that's what we're historically organized for, but also the expectation that most people have when you think about the fire department. I expect to call 911 and I expect you to get there pretty quickly, and that's what the category one is about. The second piece is about that idea of helping the community help itself. If we learned anything in the 2013 floods, we knew, you know, we're hopeful the community recognized that being resilient as a community is bigger than just local government being able, we just can't help in every aspect without needing the community to help us help itself. And so that's a big part of category two. The third area of focus is about our infrastructure. Much of it is old and outdated, and we felt it very, very important to highlight not only where we've been and where we've come, but also what we need to just maintain the levels of service or improve level of service, what that requires. And the last piece is an internal focus on the workforce itself, and how we maintain the level of high standard that we expect from our responders and our educators. So what we'll do is we'll just, there are more goals under each of these areas of focus, but what we did was, we thought we'd pull just some of the bigger highlights to give you an idea of the flavor of that particular area of focus. And so when we talk about all hazards response, the idea was, if you look at the preamble, again, that whole idea of focusing on people. So the planning team basically said, if you're a resident or visitor of Boulder, you should expect fast response. That goes without saying, but what we want to be able to do is measure what that looks like. And one of the big ones is cardiac survival rate. Now, the challenge is, if you have an arrest in Boulder or anywhere else in this country, the survival rates are pretty low, especially if it's not witnessed. But if it is witnessed, you're looking at around 8% of folks actually survive, walk out of the hospital, and resume their normal lives. The goal for the planning team was, we at least need to get into double digits over the next three to five years, if not better than that. And all the ways we need to do that, we have to figure creatively how to get there. The other one is around advanced life support, and I'm going to explain what that means here in a little bit, so I won't, you know, bear with me and I'll get to what that actually means. But the idea was, an advanced-level responder would be able to get to someone's home or business from the current 10 minutes and 46 seconds down to eight minutes. And that was the idea of improving our total response to hazards. In this particular case, it's emergency medical. The second area of focus on, again, residents and visitors around our resilient community is being able to harden our community against some of the big threats that we normally face. And when we went out and reached out to folks and asked them, what concerns you the most? I guess you could say it's a no-brainer. Most people are worried about wildfire as a big one. It did come across that way. EMS did as well, actually, but wildfire was a big one. And so our goal is, in the next few years, we want to focus on the areas around town that actually have the biggest threat from wildfire and help them harden those places against that threat. And you can see, 60% of the homes. So we actually have a goal we can reach and by a date. The second one is about reducing the burden of what we call low acuity or less severe emergency calls on the 911 system. If we divert these, then the burden on the system allows, it's less, and it allows the advanced-level responders to be available for the truly critical calls. So we can do this, we feel, over the next few years, and start reducing that burden and focus entirely on the true emergencies that require the kind of lights and sirens and advanced responders that you, that we typically expect to have respond. The third area of focus, this one's around our infrastructure, and the two goals that we pulled out of the many are basically about the size and scope of our facilities. Excuse me. Most of our stations were built 50 years ago or more. They were built for a different department, different workforce, and a different level of services. And one of the input documents to the master plan highlighted the need for us to actually work on our facilities, turn them into a modern fire station that supports the modern level of services that we provide today. And so we chose a goal of 35%, which will be halfway helped. As you'll see later, we're talking about moving our Station 3, that's already in the works, so it kind of helps us with that goal a little bit. And the other piece is just, fire stations are community assets, and therefore, as a community facility, they ought to have these kinds of things. ADA compliance, they ought to have net zero energy goals, and those can only be achieved with remodels or retrofits or complete overhaul of stations. And so that's one of the goals that you see in there around our facilities. The last part is about the workforce, and that is really, we chose a very, very specific goal that the fire service struggles with in general, but it's also true in Boulder, and that is the makeup of our workforce is still largely male. It is still largely seen, I think generally, in our culture as a masculine job, something we have to fight, not just in Boulder, but in America in general, because we know that female firefighters can do the job just fine, and that's been a challenge. So we've set an actual target in 10 years to get to 25%. Nationally, it's probably less than 10. It might even be, you know, around where we are today, around 7%. And then the other one is about our patients. And this is about the level of care that folks receive. Again, it's a focus on what our customers feel they got after calling 911. So if you call for emergency medical service, we ought to be checking up, even if it's the ambulance provider that does the work in our behalf, we ought to be getting back information about how well that person thought they received care. I get a lot of anecdotal stuff, but to actually have a survey that goes with them would be extremely helpful to us, so we know how to improve our service down the line. So that's, that's just a highlight of the key areas. What we wanted to do, and when we spoke with council earlier during a study session, was kind of drill down to the really, really key areas of the master plan. And our basic message is, because the big scuttlebutt has been around emergency medical services and what do we do, do we bring the ambulances in-house, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But regardless of whatever decision council makes and the community wants, our infrastructure is, it is not that it's old, it is truly that it no longer meets what we do today. So we have two choices. We can change what we do and stop responding to all the different hazards, which I think is not a good idea, or we can modify our support services, our infrastructure, to actually meet the needs today. And so we've highlighted the two biggest ones that need replacement are Station 2 and Station 4. Station 4 is our southernmost station, it's the one on the right. It was built probably 50 or 60 years ago. I forget the actual date, but it's a house. And they took the house and they converted the garage, so you could, if it's ever purchased, you could probably put an RV in it, I'm thinking, because the room is enough to fit a fire truck. Maybe not a big RV, but you could fit something in there. But it was, it was basically designed as a house. It has bedrooms, as you would expect in a house. It is not outfitted for the fire service of today with emergency medical response, the need for decontamination facilities. It suffers from many of the things that city facilities ought to be leading in, in terms of energy profile, ADA compliance, and so on and so forth. The other one on the left is Station 2, that one's at Baseline and Broadway. I'm sorry, the southernmost station is on Darley, right off of 93. And then this station on the left is at Baseline and Broadway, and it used to have, it was built actually with two, this is also about 50 or 60 years, it was built for two trucks that were really small. It had actually two bays. It got converted to a single bay, but we still stick two trucks in there. But the way it works is, the one on the left is our wildland truck. That's the other problem with our southernmost station, it is not equipped for wildland firefighting. It can only fit that truck, that's it. And the second one on the left has a wildland truck, but to get it out, they have to pull out the first truck, move it out of the way, then get the other one, pull it out, put the other one back in, and then go. So obviously, that's not ideal if you want to be responding from a 911 perspective, and that's not even getting into all of the other non-compliant issues around the station where there's workout facilities that should never be, where diesel exhaust is, decontamination facilities, non-existent, places to clean their bloody uniforms, not ideal the way we have it set up, because these stations were built under completely different circumstances. So our needs assessment said, these two stations need building, they need to be rebuilt. Problem is, neither facility site works. We can't build up, we can't build out. For instance, the one on the left has about 0.2 acres of usable space for a building. So these are, these structures cannot be renovated and fixed on the existing site. And so when you see the numbers that we attach to these projects, they're actually pretty big because they include needing to acquire additional land, so that creates a real problem for us. But regardless of where we go as a service, these are highlights in the master plan and say, we really need to address this before we talk about anything else special about what the fire department should or shouldn't be doing over the long haul. The other thing we talked to council about is one that was brought up on the heels of the living wage conversation. And as ironic as that is, I'm just glad that we're able to talk about the topic more now as a service level, and I'll explain what advanced life support is, as opposed to, hey, we need to pay these people better than what the average fast food worker makes, which they were not making more than that. So thanks to council's policy, we actually changed that in our contract, and our third-party provider, the ambulance contractor, now has the living wage as part of the rules. But it means that we subsidize their operation, plus they collect all the patient care revenue they were collecting before. But before I get into that, let me explain actually what it is we do and what the versions of EMS response are all about. The first, most basic level is called basic life support. And the idea is, we get somebody to, a professional-level responder, who can do more than just compression-based CPR, can do slightly more advanced interventions on scene that are related to critical care. What they can't do are invasive or medication-based interventions. They can't, they can start an IV, but they can't actually push medications. And they can do some work with resuscitation, but the more advanced stuff, they can put a defibrillator on, they can shock patients, but the advanced defibrillators, those come with the advanced life support responders. Those are your paramedics. So an EMT basic, that's what we do, that's what the fire department has, we can send that, that's what we provide. We use the third-party provider to do advanced life support. That includes advanced-level invasive procedures, special kinds of intravenous interventions, including medications that they can push. So I like to simplify it, although every doctor in the country would slam me for this, but... but it's a little like, basic life support will get you some professional level responders that will be able to do some critical life-saving care, but that's about it. They can stabilize for the most part. Probably one step below a true ER, which has doctors and nurses and everything, is getting your advanced life support responders there, your paramedics. In Boulder, your fire department will get you the BLS, and the ambulance provider will get you the ALS piece of it. That's how it works today. It doesn't necessarily mean that an ambulance is an advanced life support responder. Fire trucks with paramedics and the appropriate medications can also be considered advanced life support responders. We just don't do that in Boulder now. So the fire trucks just have basic life support gear, the ambulances in Boulder have the advanced life support responders and gear. So what we did is, in the master plan, and this is just the one specific area in the master plan around response, was proposed the idea that we could continue as we do today. We can stay with our eight basic life support units in the city around town, that is the fire trucks, and continue to require the advanced life support responders to respond in 10 minutes or less. Together, they typically, we typically have anywhere from between 10 to 12 total responders in the city. And what I mean by responders, I mean an actual company of responders. So 10 to 12 units, that gets us around the response times you saw earlier in the presentation for advanced life support. That's around 10 minutes and 46 seconds. And so couching this in terms of service levels, we can get a basic life support responder 90% of the time around seven minutes, maybe quicker, a lot of times quicker than that. The advanced life support responders will get there 10 minutes plus about 90% of the time. A lot of times they get there faster, but we can say with certainty, 10 to 11 minutes, and that's by contract. The problem with that approach as a service level is, take cardiac arrest, which is not a huge percentage of calls, but if it's one of our goals in the master plan, our best approach is going to be a combination, under fiscally constrained, of trying to get more compression CPR and education out to the public to help us. So a bystander sees someone go down, is able to do compression CPR, maybe even apply a public, publicly available advanced, or a defibrillator to them, and then when the professional BLS responders get there, they can take over from there, and then the ambulance after that. So we can still move the needle, is what we're saying, under fiscally constrained, but it would take with a minimum amount of funding, and that's what fiscally constrained is all about. If we don't do anything, we can move the needle, it simply won't be that much. And that's, that's the conversation really about advanced life support, we want the community to be considering, is at what level is an appropriate level for advanced life support to get to your side? And right now, it's around 10 minutes plus 90% of the time. Now, that's fiscally constrained. That's if we get minimal new funding, over and above what we normally get year in, year out. Under advanced life support, if there, the action vision, I'm sorry, the action, I shouldn't use the vision piece because that's the third part. Under the action version of the plan, it actually, in a nutshell, basically means we take our eight BLS providers, our eight fire truck companies, and raise their level of certification to paramedic status. So now we have eight ALS responders throughout the city, and with them, and even if it's a third-party provider of ALS services and ambulance, now we have 10 to 12 to 13 ALS providers all over the city. But in order to do that, it would require that we invest, that bottom bullet there, about 1.78 million in annual cost to purchase the vehicles, more than anything else. It does require, though, that we have a house for them. And part of the problem with, with our proposal here is, the only couple of stations under the new scenario we could manage within the next few years is the brand-new Station 3 that should be built in the next three to five years, and our existing Station 1, which is downtown. It would need the other two stations in the mix of funding longer term, so we could build out this idea of increasing our, our service level. Now, we don't need to build the stations to upgrade all of our existing eight units. That could be done today. It does require annual costs to make that happen. Training, maybe even hiring paramedics that slash firefighters. But the advantage of doing this is that it also improves our all-hazard response, because they're firefighters slash paramedics, and they can do rescue, and they can do all, so that they can do it all, as opposed to, the way it works now is, if it's a traffic accident, you need the firefighters, and then the ambulance comes in after the fact and does only EMS. They do not do any of the rescue-based stuff, but under a different scenario, you're actually increasing the number of all-hazard responders. That's the next version of this plan. So this simply upgrades our existing staff units. This improves, this lowers that ALS response time, and this is probably far less expensive in the shorter term than the vision version, which I'll take you to next. So in the simplest form, the, the vision version of ALS basically says, you need the new stations for full build-out. The way we have it built in, it's really sort of a 10-year plan where, as each station comes online, you add responders to the system till you get to a system that basically brings even the transport units in-house, staffed by firefighter, paramedics, and now they do all-hazard approach to everything, and we have between 10 and 15, actually, I think the number is, eight and five, 13 total units in the system that are run by the fire service. And it's completely in-house. It is offset, and these are net costs, but any expenses we, we put out there are offset by patient care revenue in full build-out, which right now, the third-party provider gets. So that's, those are the three versions of that one goal that we highlighted for council because this has been the big talk, and we wanted it to, one thing we wanted to be clear, we want this to be a discussion about service levels, what's acceptable, what's not, whether we do it in-house or not, what do we want our ALS times to be? And, and the, the other piece of this is more along the lines of, the infrastructure, regardless of what we do, needs to, needs care. It needs some sort of funding attention long-term, and that's really the, the two big issues in our master plan that we're trying to highlight for, for council going forward. Turn it back over to Chris, I think.
Okay, so we'll jump into the Boulder Valley Comp Plan analysis here, try to run through this here a bit quick. But I just want to point out, for each of the focus areas that the chief had spoken to, the following analysis is really broken down into two separate parts. First is alignment with BBCP service standards, specifically defined by the Urban Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Care Service Standard, which can be found on page 143 of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And then second, you'll see alignment with just the general Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies. So for the first key goal, all-hazard response and EMS, some of the service standards met in the comp plan include responsiveness to public objectives, operational effectiveness, including fire and EMS response, as well as all-hazard response. Couple policies met from the comp plan include policy 8.7, safety, 8.8, resilience and public safety, and risk reduction. The second key goal or key focus area, standards met include community risk reduction, policy 8.7, safety, 8.8, resilience and public safety and risk reduction, 8.10, community connectivity and preparedness, and then finally 10.3, which is communication capacity for resilience. Key goal three, service standards met include adequacy of equipment and facilities, and then the BBCP policies continue to be met, including 8.7, safety, 8.8, resilience, public safety and risk reduction, 8.10, community connectivity and preparedness, and then again, policy 10.03, communication capacity for resilience. Lastly, for workforce development, service standards met include proficiency of personnel, and BBCP policies include policy 5.19, which reads diverse workforce, education, and training. So the next lens that the board should really be looking at this master plan through is the identification of its capital needs and funded sources. Now, as, just as a reminder, departmental master plans provide that bridge between the BBCP and the annual capital improvement program, and the prioritization of these strategies in the fire master plan, described under each area of focus, will guide future CIP requests in the coming years. The implementation of the master plan can be pursued according to three levels of investment, which the chief already spoke to a bit, but those include fiscally constrained, action, and vision. So to identify some of the capital requests that are coming through under each one of these funding scenarios, I'll go with fiscally constrained first, and this, what it really does is represents the investment needed to maintain the status quo. Now, that's in the meantime, but not necessarily in the long-term, which is important to differentiate. Little to no additional investment is made into the operations of the department. This does include the capital investment required to complete the construction of Fire Station 3, but no other capital investment under this scenario. For the action plan, this adds approximately $9.4 million in cumulative funding over the next five years. This does include the majority of capital investment, including the replacement of Fire Station 2 and 4, as well as construction of a storage facility. This includes the deployment, the deployment of firefighter, paramedics on each engine, and the purchase of capital equipment necessary to support ALS first response and medical response teams, as the chief had alluded to. This does assume that capital facility acquisition is debt-financed. And lastly, with the vision plan, this adds roughly $7.8 million, which is 8.4 on top of what we've outlined for the action plan. This includes the full deployment of fire-based ALS, including ambulance transport and community paramedicine. Now, I do think it is important to discern between the capital requests need of full deployment of fire-based ALS with the capital infrastructure needs surrounding Fire Stations 2, 3, and 4, as the chief had alluded to. As he had mentioned, these are heavily outdated, outperforming structures that really, regardless of ALS decision-making, will need to be addressed in the CIP in the short and long term. So a couple next steps. City council will be hearing this item and hopefully recommending acceptance on February 18, so just a few weeks from now, and then after that, we'll begin implementation and the budget development for 20 to 2021. Just a reminder for the board, the key issues for consideration tonight is, is the master plan consistent with the goals and policies in the comp plan? Does it outline BBCP service standards and a plan to meet those in the future? And then finally, are the capital needs and funded sources in the master plan outlined? With that, staff recommends two actions for the board this evening. First is the recommendation to the city council for acceptance of the Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan, and two, approval of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan summary. And with that, we will be happy to take any questions the board may have.
Great, thanks, Chris and Mike. So all due is, we'll do a round of questions for people who have, hopefully, questions that are germane to making a decision tonight, a recommendation. And then we'll go through the three key issues after that, and I think we can probably just negative pull our way through them if we, as we've done before on the master plan. So does anyone have any questions we're going to start off with?
I did have one question.
Sarah?
So this is actually a financing question, and you talk in the master plan about the opportunity to extend the tax, about property tax and carving off a little bit more from property taxes, but I'm struck by some of the conversation we all had about, what's, community benefit and the idea of, were there, might there, might funding for facilities that are necessary in Boulder be part of the community benefits discussion? And I know in other cities, in Washington DC, for example, there are buildings that were built as a collaboration between the city, and they place a fire, a fire, a fire office, a fire building there, and then apartments above, and I'm just curious if that is something you all have thought about as well?
The short answer is yes. The challenge that we've had, because even with the Station 3 that we're doing now, there were opportunities in the same footprint that we were looking for land to go, to do sort of a public-private partnership or an affordable housing deal, and we've even had discussions after the fact with the property we have now to do some creative stuff. Our main challenge was that we, the CIP is, it's, it's an unfunded list, and without the funding to come to the table to say, we have a dedicated source here that we can work with a developer or work with somebody who wants to do something, we were challenged to do anything. We even had some concepts that were thrown our way for Station 3, with the Spark Development as, as an example. But without any funding to come to the table and say, yeah, we've already got a dedicated funding source for this particular project, we couldn't jump on it. And we ended up having to pass. And so what we're really trying to do here with these two stations is, at the very least, identify a dedicated funding source longer term, so that if these things come up, we could jump on them and potentially save money, because obviously, the longer we wait here in Boulder, the prices are not going down. So the faster we can jump on a project, even if it, our portion of it, we have to sort of wait on, the better off we're going to be. But as it stands today, these two projects have been in the CIP for a long time, but without the funding, it's been hard to do that kind of stuff. But we have been, we are absolutely, we desire to do that kind of stuff. It's definitely helpful if we can go in with someone else and even save the city money on the backend and save it for other capital projects.
John, you got a question, I think?
Yeah, got a couple, actually, that I think are short. But first, I'd just like to congratulate you on, on a beautiful presentation.
Thank you.
And the material we received earlier, very useful. Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Are you satisfied with the level of coordination that the fire rescue has with the surrounding Boulder Rural Fire Department and the other local departments that you may be coordinating with on open space-type issues? Is there any need to review that coordination or change it in context of, of the master plan that you're dealing with?
That's a great question. We actually considered that in the development of the master plan. One of the things that I've been working really hard in the last five years with my counterparts in all those departments is what we call, in, I guess, common jargon is closest unit dispatch. The idea really, among all the chiefs, is to blur the political lines a little bit, and if you're the closest unit, then you're the one that gets dispatched, because at the end of the day, the person calling 911 is not going to notice the patch they noticed the care. So, so we've been working really hard. Our, we're challenged in particular in Boulder because we're, we're on an island, really. We're on a land island because we have open space all around us, and with the exception of Boulder Rural, which is actually right there in Gun Barrel, we're usually the second in-unit, five minutes out, and vice versa. So, but we are working with them, and we're doing a much better job regionally than we have in a very long time. As a perfect example, we have, we have formed hazardous materials authority, response authority, because no one jurisdiction can afford the, the massive expenses that go with hazardous materials response. But we all have these response time goals for those particular emergencies, and overturn tank truck or a facility that has a hazardous material spill. Boulder couldn't do it on its own with the number of responders you would need. So we've worked together with all our counterparts as far up as Longmont, Mountain View, and all of us have resources around the county if something happens. And we just had one, actually, two days ago, was it yesterday? Two days ago, here in Boulder, and the whole team from the county came in and worked with us to take care of that hazardous materials incident. That's the kind of stuff we're doing more of, and we incorporate it in our plan and are looking to do. The more we can work with those responders, the less burden on the Boulder taxpayer, the less burden on all of the taxpayers. So we're not building stations 150 feet apart, we're actually working together, and that's our long-term goal. Boulder Rural is, is an interesting collaborator with us, because they actually are moving to the ALS model we're talking about in the vision version of this, and we're not yet. If we don't move to that level, it's not an even swap. If, if they cover some of ours and we cover some of theirs, they may balk a little bit. So we may have to work with them around that, but they actually respond through town to go to the rest of their jurisdiction, and they're actually closer many times to some of our stuff in Gun Barrel, and to be able to work with them and swap. And to be able to work with them and swap, even if that, we could do that at an equal level of service, we'd love to do that. And that actually is a comment in our, in our master plan going forward. So, so we had, the short answer to your question is yes. We have definitely incorporated that and want to incorporate it in wherever we cite. If we have to move our stations, we want to be, be considerate of that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just a couple more. Recently, there's been problems associated with pollution due to leaking tanks in holding firefighting liquids of various types. And also, I've read recently that some of the firefighting equipment may be hazardous to the firefighter's health from skin contact and stuff like that. And I didn't see that addressed here. And I'm just wondering how, how you're thinking of addressing those issues?
We probably didn't do a good job of calling that out. The, the second part of your statement, the, so when, when the firefighters go fight the average fire, we require them to decontaminate first on scene, save the water, don't just dump it anywhere. And then when they get back to the station, they're required to take, we have two sets of bunker. They take the one set of bunker gear and they have to get it washed and put the other set on. The idea is to prevent the contaminants that got on their gear. Well, it's the same issue with their regular uniforms when they're on medical calls and they get splashed with blood or other things. They're not supposed to track that stuff back to the station, back, even back to their homes. And our facilities are mixed with regard to the ability to accommodate that. In the master plan, Station 2, Station 4, all new stations accommodate that. Just as, if you build a new station anywhere in the country, that acknowledgement is already there. As for the fire, I think you might be alluding to the firefighting foam that actually leaked into-
Right, the PFAS-type liquids.
That's gotten into the water supply of some areas here in Colorado in particular, but it's, it's elsewhere as well. We don't use that foam at all. And, and in our training ground at the reservoir, we've, we, we don't use that foam, never have. So it's not an issue for us. It is for some of the surrounding mountain towns, as you know, and they're continuing to monitor that kind of thing. That's not in the master plan because it isn't an issue for us in Boulder proper.
And so there's no other materials that you anticipate or use now or expect to be using that should be dealt with, with similar considerations of polluting groundwater from tanks?
Not that we're aware of. In fact, the ones we use actually are all approved surfactants, whether they're UL-listed or approved. I don't know, the EPA does not approve, but they've already been reviewed by those kinds of authorities. So, so, and, and we only really use, in city of Boulder, we only use one type of surfactant that's, that's already had that kind of approval. So we're not, that's why it's not in our master plan, because we don't use it in appreciable amounts. And even the ones we have are already environmentally friendly. But we have not used AFF, which is the kind of foam that we're talking about, certainly not at our training ground, but we don't use it at all and don't plan on using it, never will. And obviously, since it's against Colorado law, no one should be using it.
And-
Go ahead, go ahead, then Peter's got one after you.
Oh, sorry, Peter.
No, you can keep going, John.
So in the, in the statistics that you presented in terms of how, what, what might be necessary and the costs associated with improving response times and stuff, I think that's, that's very interesting and very important. I'm trying to figure out how that information can be used to compare, for example, the benefits associated with other efforts the city might be taking and for, for public health and, and welfare. And for example, and I'm, I'm just picking this out of the air, the city is considering spending X millions of dollars to, for flood safety and flood mitigation for parts of town. And, you know, that has ultimately, the concern there is also life and, and safety. And I'm trying to understand what the actual benefit to life and safety is for Boulder by, you know, diminishing the response time by two minutes. And I, I understand the challenges with coming up with a saying that's going to save 100 lives over 10 years or, or something like that. But it would be somehow interesting to be able to compare the benefits associated with that effort and the costs so that some coherent comparison can be made with the other efforts that the city is undertaking. Have you given any?
That's a fair point. And you're right, it's a tough one. The best that we could do under our own master plan is, is we, we try to do it this way. X number of dollars buys you this amount in response time. The, the tricky part is even if you lower response times, will we increase our cardiac survival rates, for example? We know how many we have in a given year cardiac events. And we know that on a, every, any given day, we have a ton of emergency medical calls that are truly emergencies from the, that need an advanced level responder. It's hard to take that day, day in, day out number, though we know what it is, and compare it to the long-term flood impacts that if they weren't there, I suppose you could have thousands of folks affected in one instance, kind of the way we did in the floods of 2013. There were, in that one three-week period, there were thousands of people calling for help. Had we maybe had better flood mitigation beforehand, maybe that could have been far less. So it's a, it is a hard policy-type question. And our approach was, well, the best I think we can do is try to say how much we could shave off on response times and what we think we could do with cardiac survival rates. And no, it doesn't look like a lot, going from 8% to 12%. That's what it is nationally. But it's a big deal to the 8% or 12%-
Oh, yeah.
-who have an event. And, and I'm not the one that's, I, I certainly don't want to come in and say, oh, babies are going to die and that kind of thing. The, the deal really is, what do we want to push our percentage to and how much is it worth? And that's really, that's a tough one. I think we can move the needle with not huge amounts of investment, but as a community, we have to kind of decide, in terms of response times, which are sort of a surrogate for improved outcomes, what are we comfortable with? Do we want to track with the rest of the front range? Do we want to track with what's out there generally around the country? And, and the conversations that, that have come back to us have been more along the lines of, well, what is everybody else doing? Not, not response times, what is everybody else doing? Are they doing firefight ALS? We know that. We know who's doing that. That, to me, is not really the discussion. The discussion's more along the lines of, would you like an advanced level responder to get to your home at seven minutes, eight minutes? And the, and if we follow the comp plan, the comp plan actually says six minutes, but I wouldn't, don't hold us to the six-minute thing. It's meant to be a stretch goal. It, it's meant to push our resources, push our thinking to get there, but do it in the most cost-effective way possible, which is what we're trying to do.
Thank you. I, I certainly get your point. What, what I'm trying to get at is if there's some statistical relationship, and I understand that there's going to be huge variation depending on the circumstances and all that, between, that indicates the actual benefit in terms of life saved or improved outcomes for, you know, the population over 10 years of, of a, of a better response time. And I, I understand it won't be specific for Boulder, but maybe nationwide, there's some numbers or something to sort like that?
There's not. And, and that's the tricky part, is that it's hard to, I'm not sure there's any data, quite honestly, that correlates faster response times with better outcomes that we can point to scientifically across the board in the country. And, and so the national standards are all around six minutes, which is what our comp plan says. But I can honestly tell you, I'm not, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of science behind that. It, it is more tied to, if you have a cardiac event and you go down, it is five minutes before brain death starts occurring without any intervention whatsoever. That's kind of where the science really is. But time, there are some who've said faster response times don't get you anything. And I don't mind saying that because there isn't a lot of science behind it. The theory is, the faster we get advanced level responders there, the faster the interventions that occur. But you can also do that with community responders. That's why we pointed out in the fiscally constrained environment, if we're teaching people how to do CPR and there's more of them and we make use of some of those new apps that actually alert people to an event, for much smaller incremental cost, we could maybe move the needle. I don't know how much, but I, we can if people are right there at your side starting CPR. And so that's why that's in our fiscally constrained version. So it's really all theory, to be perfectly honest with you, that we can really, really improve outcomes by shaving time off. But to tie it to an actual outcome, that's a tricky one and it's, and I don't even think that data is available nationally, to be honest.
Thank you.
Cool. And I think, I mean, those answers are really good. I think I'm going to ask for a little bit more brevity on all sides here, so we can maybe answer it more, more quickly. Peter, you had a question?
I did. And I wanted to ask staff about BVCP and if there's any reference, instead of me trying to dig through and find it, about percent of BFR staff that live within city boundaries, within the city of Boulder, and if that's reflected anywhere in BVCP goals.
So as far as how many BFR staff live within city limits is, is what you're asking?
Let's start with any, any reference whatsoever in BVCP of community goals of having those that take care of us live amongst us.
Yeah, I know, I think there's, there's, there's discussion in the comp plan about it. I don't know specifically which policy it is. I mean, that's something that I think that we're always striving for, and I know the Fire Department continues to strive for that, too. Michael can speak a bit about the realities of that for the Fire Department specifically, as a lot of our firefighters do live outside of city limits and come in for extended work shifts. I'm not sure specifically which policy or where it's located in the comp plan, but I can certainly follow up with that.
No problem. Then I would direct to chief, what's a ballpark, you think? And I know not everybody wants to live in the city of Boulder, but I'm curious, what's a ballpark?
It, it is probably less than five, it might be three.
Great. My next question, the AMR third party, you referenced that they are making, on average, minimum wage?
Not anymore.
Living wage.
It were, living wage.
Living wage.
Living wage. The training that they have versus the, let me back up. The BFR staff that would have that training, that would substitute, be a substitute for same unit arriving, would be in addition to AMR. It wouldn't be an environment where we would then be not having that AMR systems because it would be an addition to.
Under the action version of the plan?
Vision, it would be replacement.
Vision would replace.
Got it.
But, and I'll try to be real quick here, the, there's still a place for an ambulance provider in town for surge, so when we get exhausted. And the other part is, we would never do inter-facility transfers. So to take it from the hospital down to Denver, because that would lock up a unit outside of the city. But it's a very lucrative part of the ambulance market.
Got it. And all your numbers were net of all the adjustments made for what we do pay third parties, what we would no longer pay third parties, and what we would then be paying BFR?
Yes.
Got it. Last question, the Fire Station 2 and 4 that need to be replaced. Again, it was a great presentation and I was looking for the numbers. What was the budget number that was associated with those two replacements?
Fifty?
Estimate.
So 55 million for the two and the reserve facility, or the storage facility?
55 for the two plus the storage. And those, those two units, the two would how, would sleep how many compared to what they do now?
Each of them would be a multi-company station, a minimum of six, I believe we had up eight or was it nine? Six to eight, six to eight responders out of them.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Well, thanks. Other questions? David?
Yeah, I was really interested in hearing about the wildland urban interface analyses that are, are there and the goal of 60% in a, in a few years. But have we started that? Have we done some of those assessments? Okay.
Yes, we, we've already begun. I couldn't tell you a percentage, but I, I just had the number on Wednesday of how many we've completed. You remember, is it?
I want to say 60 total of detailed.
So, that's right. There are 60 that we did detailed review. And it's in the hundreds of the street assessments where they're just walking down the street and they look from the street without interfacing with the homeowner, just kind of getting an idea. And then the homeowner comes out, and I think we've done around 60 of those with the homeowner.
60 with the homeowner, cool. And that comes out of the community risk reduction pie, part of the pie chart, that smaller one that you were mentioning?
That and the wildland portion of the, but they're using the wildland responders as well to help.
Cool. Thank you.
And Sarah?
So I just have a couple of questions about the diversity component. So you focus on diversity related to gender. And I'd like to have you just explicate a little bit about the challenges of our current facilities in being able to, to attract some women to the service.
Sure. Our, of course, our stations were all built for a male workforce, 40, 50 years ago and 60 in some cases. So they're either sharing a bathroom or they're going in, locking the door and flipping the sign on it kind of thing. So that's, that's been our main challenge. A couple of the stations actually do accommodate females a little better than others, but, but all of them, we have to do lots of workarounds to make that an inviting place. So the, the good thing is there's all separate sleeping quarters. It's not like everybody's in one big room. But it's still, it's still a station, all of them designed for one gender.
So the facilities request that you have are, would be a, it's, it's a tactical step towards being able to attract women to the service.
Absolutely.
And because you focus only on women, I'm just curious if you have other diversity concerns or challenges in the department and whether there are things that would be helpful to address there?
So the planning team, when they came together, they, they did look at all diverse, diversity, workforce diversity issues. And I guess, in, for them, I would simply say that we had to crawl before we can walk. They did look around at our, our racial and ethnic diversity, and that actually turns out to be pretty good right now. And so we can't, we can't start focusing just on females and then forget the other pieces of diversity. But the female workforce has declined so much in the last 30 years in Boulder that the team said, we took our eye off the needle here and we're not even seeing the numbers of females coming in to the testing to get in the department. And so we knew, we're, we're not recruiting well, we're not doing any of that. So they decided, pick one, focus on this, that will be what we focus on without, without neglecting the other pieces of diversity.
Thank you.
That's great. Other questions? Herman?
I'm going to try to be brief, but let me just say two things that are-
Is your mic on?
It is, the light's on, yeah.
I didn't hear, sorry.
That are comments. One is just a compliment. I, I think, you know, we see a lot of master plans we have over the years and we throw all kinds of questions from left field at whichever chief is in front of us, whether it's library or fire or whatever. And you guys just handle them with unbelievable, broad-based aplomb. You just know everything. And it's, it's just a really amazing reflection on the kind of people who Boulder attracts. And so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, in behalf of the team as well, because that's who put me up here.
Thanks to the team, too. And, and then just, just a gratitude for all the service that you provide and, and what you do for our community. So thank you for that. Wait around long enough and your colleagues will ask all your questions for you. So thanks for not using PFAS, that was one of my questions. And as far as diversity is concerned, do you have any numbers on racial, ethnic, and, and when I say gender diversity, I mean LGBT diversity as well?
That's the toughest one, the last piece. We don't ask that, and so I don't have that number. Racial and ethnic, we do. I don't have it off the top of my head, certainly something we can provide. The, the females is also an easy one. As of right now, we have seven of 99 structured firefighters. We have, we have more women in the support areas and other areas of the department. But I think this one was geared more towards a structure firefighter's goal. It's seven, I'm going to lose two. I'm losing two, am I not? So it goes down to five this year. But I gain, I'm gaining two, or at least one, in, in an academy that's going through now for this summer. So I lose, I'll get a net loss of one in this year.
Okay. Last question. One thing I noticed- One thing I noticed in the pie chart of the budget is that in the big dark blue chunk, which was over sixteen million dollars, which is the actual physical service piece, twenty-one percent of that, the second biggest part of that pie piece, was water rescue. And so now we're talking about three million dollars. We're talking about, you know, fifteen out of every thousand dollars Boulder spends goes to water rescue. And I was just wondering, along the lines of what you said about community responders, is there some money we can get back on that with better education around ice fishing, things like that? I mean, I know you can't stop people from driving into Boulder Creek when they slide out on the ice, but there are things that maybe we can do better that would save, well, it's a pretty huge chunk of money, actually.
So I think you're referring to the big part of the Pac-Man there, the blue, and then in there it says water rescue, twenty-one percent of that part?
Correct, yeah.
That represents a piece of the response under emergency operations. The actual total is how much? Because it includes the overtime piece and training?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how much that is. You make a good point, there may be some offsets for that. The other piece that we've talked about is, is water rescue truly something Boulder should bear all the cost of, or can we regionalize that type of response? So it is a conversation we're having as a service, whether or not this is something we can do the way we did with hazardous materials. Because before hazardous materials, that's our portion of the regional approach. Can we make water rescue the same thing, and would that twenty-one percent come down? I don't think it would come down a ton, because we would have to commit certain resources to the regional response, but does it have to be at twenty-one percent? It could be, could it come down to fifteen? That's a conversation we'd want to have with our regional responders. Because we're big, we have most of the risk, but there's lots of bodies of water around here, and being able to share the burden with like a Longmont and Mountain View and others would be helpful. And we're trying to do that with all of our services, with the exception of, well, even with structured fire, we're doing that. So the answer to your question in short is, yes, we need to look for opportunities to try to offset that, and it could be a variety of ways, including what's out there to help us with the cost of readiness.
Yeah, I mean, even testing ice thickness and putting up a red flag, you know, might save you having to go back out there with the whole crew to pull somebody out of there.
If we could, if we could enforce that, yes. That would be great. And that's also tricky, too.
Just putting it on the plate, I don't think I'll make any kind of motions to-
Put a camera on that flag, and then it's, they get a bill.
John?
Yeah. Do you want to share the diversity statistics?
Okay, yeah. Hold on a second, John.
Diversity, and this is something that, so right now, we are basically reflective of the community. Now, that is a statement that has a lot of things loaded in it, because we are a fairly Caucasian community. However, our department currently is basically one percent trending with the community on Caucasians, two percent, we exceed the community on Hispanic, we're five percent African-American, where the community's about one percent. And we do lag behind in Asian demographics, where the community's five percent, and we're two percent. So that's where we stand right now, but obviously, we're also committed to the GARE efforts that the city's currently undergoing. So, but that is where we're currently at, so.
That's good information. Also, could you just give your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Holbert Duherty Fire Chief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
John, you had a question?
Yeah, could you tell us what the role of Boulder Emergency Squad is with respect to, for example, these water rescues and all these other aspects that you're involved with?
Sure. They, as a, as a technical, excuse me, I'm sorry, technical volunteer squad, we call them in to supplement our response. They have a contract with the county and with us. And so we have, when we have an incident, they respond with divers along with our divers. And as a matter of fact, we have divers that are, that work on, with them. But they come and work alongside us on a technical rescue of that kind. So they're volunteers, so they just simply augment, so whoever responds from them augments what we already have on duty. We usually have three divers, they bring in the remainder to actually effect a dive.
I see. So given, given that character, it's unreasonable to expect that they might play a more significant role in the future than they do now.
Probably not for what we give them in funding. It's pretty small.
Thank you.
Great. Any other relevant, burning questions for this? No? Okay, we can go into the, right, yeah. Key issues, and I guess, let's just see if we can negative pull our way through these. Thank you for putting those up. So the first one is, is the master plan consistent with the goals, policies, and growth predictions of the comp plan? Does anyone feel like that's not, that it's not? Everybody agrees with staff's assessment? Okay.
I'm gonna-
You want to say something about that?
Yeah, I just want to say something. You know, looking at the comp plan, the comp plan talks in sustainability principles about, about, well, social, cultural, racial, and ethnic equal equity and diversity, creating a valuable human, valuable human capital that contributes to economic and environmental sustainability. Principles of social sustainability talks about respecting and valuing cultural, social, racial, and ethnic diversity. Policy 5.16 talks about diversity in employment opportunities. 5.19 that was cited talks about a diverse workforce, and 8.05 talks about diversity. So I want to commend the fire rescue for having a better, a more, I should say, a more diverse work population than we have as a whole in Boulder. Five times the African-American percentage is pretty darn good. But I think that something in your master plan that actually celebrates that diversity and makes a point of it, and talks about the value of maintaining it in conformity with the comp plan, would be very welcome. And I think if you're looking to hire a more diverse workforce, I doubt that all the, you know, the most poindexterish of your job applicants actually read your master plan before their job interview, but for those who do, it would be pretty nice to see that diversity is something that's valued by the department.
That's a good, good point. Any other comments on that, real quick? Are we good? Okay. So on key issue number two, does the master plan outline BVCP service standards and a plan to meet them in the future? Does anyone disagree with that?
I have a comment.
Comment?
I agree with it, but I have a comment.
Cool. I didn't see the other two hands out there, so I'm sort of just-
I'm just reading, also have a comment.
You're good? David? You're good? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Make a John McCombs.
Yeah, I think the master plan does outline service standards and a plan to meet them. But as I mentioned before, I think demonstrating how those service standards result in meeting the actual desired outcome in terms of, you know, lives saved, or something of the sort like that, would be very useful. Because the city has to make these trade-offs between various programs, and to the degree possible that it can, can make useful comparisons is very important. But I, we've talked about this before, you've said that that data may not exist to show the benefit, but, but to some, in some manner, to make it as clear as possible what the actual benefit is beyond just shaving two minutes off of response time is useful.
Can I just respond to that? It strikes me that one of the, I think the plan is great, and it puts Boulder, assuming it's accepted, it puts Boulder on the path, the trajectory to become, to meet national standards in terms of how many officers you have on a truck, and the capacity of those officers to serve the public. And it's maybe, and to your question, John, it might be some measurements, some metrics that are about the nation, the way in which communities are evaluated on, by the, whatever is your national body. I understand that it's like cities on a one to ten scale, and we're a three, and we could be a two, and, which is a move up. So maybe that's a metric that would satisfy your concern about whether or not moving in this direction actually moves the needle for the community.
Yeah, we'll put, I guess I'll just make one comment, too, in the sense of, you know, the comp plan does have the stretch goal of six minutes, and, you know, some of the things like that, which is very comp plan-ish kind of thing to have in there. I think the, I really appreciate the sort of small, medium, and large approach you're taking to the structure here, and the vision seems like it's got a lot of good stuff in it. I really feel like one of the biggest steps inside that middle piece is, you know, getting fire medics on the trucks now. It seems like that's a really huge advantage, so hopefully, you're able to get enough funding to do that, although we don't really weigh in on that, but throwing my hat in that, we should do that ring. Then the key issue number three is, are the capital needs and funded, funding sources outlined in the master plan? To the extent that they are unfunded, capital needs.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to highly recommend to the city council that they support either the action or the vision?
Certainly, yeah. I think, I mean, opining on that seems like it's fair game.
Okay.
It's not one of our key issues, because it's not in the booklet, but-
Okay. How, what do we do that?
Right now, sounds good. I think you actually just did it.
I would very much, I would very much like to figure out a way to convey a recommendation to city council to encourage them to accept this plan and to fund it at the action or the vision level. And I don't know if that has to be a motion, or just a pure recommendation? I'm looking at you, I don't know what.
There it is. You can make it in form of a motion. The action and vision plan is going to be accomplished through the capital improvement projects and the funding that's approved every year, I believe. Do you agree with that? So it would come up every year when, when the budget comes in front of the planning board, and you can revisit that and reemphasize that, but I would do that in, you can say it right now, just understand that's how it's actually implemented.
That every year, we need to reaffirm, or ask again if there's a reaffirmation of-
Yeah, every year, funding is assigned to the fire department with the budget, and through that, and how much is assigned to it is determined, how much can be done.
Okay.
So just to clarify on that, city council won't be specifically asked that question when they see this next month, or in a few weeks?
They won't be looking at the budget-
At the budget.
-at that point in time.
Thank you.
If, if I could suggest, I would rather just do a thumbs up and thumbs down on this, and then consider your motion separately.
Okay.
That sounds fair. So I think we, I think we've adequately covered the three issues, three key issues. We could do a motion after this, Sarah, for what thing, the thing that you brought up. If we want to go ahead and make a motion on the two actions that we've got in front of us. So I'll go ahead and move that the planning board recommended city council that they accept the Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan. Can I make those two motions in one motion, or do we do separate votes?
Separate.
Probably separate.
Yeah, I would go ahead and do separate, but refer to Hella.
It's okay, it's a smart move.
Well, the reason why is because one's a recommendation, and one's an actual amendment to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, so.
Fair, let's do two. Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Okay.
And I'd also like to offer a friendly to your, your motion, and I would just say the planning board further recommends that BFR add policy language to the master plan that celebrates the diversity of BFR's workforce and commits to maintaining a commitment to such diversity.
I accept that.
Is this also the place for me to do the friendly, or later?
I was thinking it could happen as a separate motion after these.
Okay, good.
So does anyone want to speak to that motion? I don't need to. All of my curiosity is answered. So we'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Cool, it passes unanimously. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan summary.
Second.
Okay. Same thing. Anyone want to speak to it? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Cool, pass that, too.
So I don't think I've done this before.
No, this is gonna be great.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that, or a motion that city, that we recommend that city council approve this plan and support either the action or vision portions. I don't know quite the right way to say this. I'm just looking at you, because you'll end up having to draft it.
Action or vision strategies might be enough.
Would that be around the ALS or the EMS piece, or is it-
Well, what I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm using the lens of the budget. That's the language I'm using, so that you can begin the process of this step-by-step layering that you've made very clear, is your objective to bring the department into the 21st century. But I don't know quite how to say it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure whether, what you're talking about either, because the vision piece, the, and the action/vision piece, I was thinking that that's for the ALS, the, you know, advanced life-saving services.
That's what the chief focused on, but if you read the whole plan, it's, there are many, many components of it that are, that layer on top of each other over the next ten years to get them to, to get the department to, the facilities and trained employees that they hope to get to, as I'm understanding the plan. So what I'm trying to do is put before the city council a recommendation that they commit, that they, that they recognize the additional funding, planning, additional plant, additional funding that is needed in order for the department to move in that direction, rather than just keeping it as-is.
So maybe that the motion would be something like you are recommending they support, at a minimum, the action plan and preferably the vision plan, to make it-
Perfect.
Shorten the sentence.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Well done.
So I make that-
Finally got good at it.
Do I get to make my own motion? Making that motion?
You made that motion.
Yes.
Motion by Sarah Silver. Does anyone want a second? I'll second it. Does anyone want to speak to it?
I'd like to see. I, I don't oppose the idea of moving to this, these different levels, but given the various budget issues the city is dealing with, I think that the city council needs to understand the trade-offs more clearly associated with them. I'm sure there are many benefits associated with them, but the city is dealing with plenty of other issues, and we're aware of some of them here, and I'm sure there are some that we don't know about. And so I don't feel comfortable making that recommendation without clear understanding of the actual benefits associated with those, for reasons we've talked about earlier this evening. And I understand the difficulty in developing that information, but given the trade-offs that the city has to deal with, I just don't feel it's appropriate to make that recommendation.
Understood. Peter's waving back there.
John, I, I have to admit that I've had so much fun being on this board with you for moments just like this, because I do enjoy you. But I, I want to go on record in saying how much I disagree that there are trade-offs being made currently in the budget, and we need to quantify the cardiac arrest survival rates while at the same time, as much as I'm an environmentalist, I don't hear the same call for a quantification of Preble's jumping mouse and its impact, yet it has passion and it's directing policy, whereas this is actual human life.
That's a fair point. I don't know if we need to debate that, but-
I would like to clarify what we're voting on here, because we went through the budget numbers for the ALS action plan and vision, which were, would add 1.78, 1.14 in, for the action, 5.45 and 1.68 for the vision, so that was just for the ALS piece. But then we saw a slide that showed the overall numbers, which was 9.39 million for action, 17.8 million for vision. That incorporates those earlier numbers, bundles them into a larger action and vision, and that's what we're talking about here. I just want to make sure. Does that, everybody agree? Okay, thank you.
John, I appreciate, I totally appreciate that the city council will ultimately have to make these trade-offs, but the city, Boulder is growing, and I think we would want a fire and rescue department that is keeping up with our growth and our needs, and has the tech- technology and the staffing and the equipment and the facilities necessary to do that. I don't think the city council is going to say yes to $55 million, but I'd like them to at least know that we, as a board, either did or didn't encourage them to look to support an expansion of the capacity of the department.
Cool. I'll go ahead and call the question list, people want to, for the lobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got everybody all opposed, so everyone else voted yes, and John Gerson opposed. I can't get every name right because it's too tired.
Chairman Bowen.
Too tired.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Who seconded it?
Me.
No, you, oh, you seconded it.
I did.
And may I ask, just for the record, can you please restate your motion? Because it was... This planning board recommends to city council that it approve either the action or vision plan and budget proposed in the Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan. Thank you.
Did you want to establish a preference for the vision one?
No, I, I just don't want them, I want to discourage them from not making any improvements.
Does everyone feel comfortable that that language is close enough to what we voted on?
Not really. So the...
It's different.
It's different than what we voted on.
Yeah.
And it talks about city council approving this budget, and I don't think they're going to do that as part of the...
What, you wordsmith it. I'm, I'm obviously not using exactly the right language, so...
Maybe just go back on the tape to the language Brian used, Cindy, if Sarah can't remember it.
I'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it. You're free to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you guys doing, really, really well done.
Save those cats.
And so we're going to take like maybe a five or 10-minute break and come back for the last item on our agenda, which is a matter from historic staff. Be right back.
James Hewitt, Historic Preservation Planner with the City of Boulder. And I'm happy to be here this evening to chat with you a little bit about this project. As you'll recall, I was here in October.
Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, no.
I was here in October and introduced this project, which had been going on for a couple of months, and promised that I'd be back with an update and have been giving updates to the Planning Board as well as the Parks and Recreation Board, open space, mountain parks, keeping the Landmarks Board in the loop, as well as the Colorado Chautauqua Association Board. So just as a refresher, what we're doing here is working collaboratively with the Colorado Chautauqua Association to develop a sustainability and resilience strategy for the national historic landmark, that is Chautauqua. And that refers to the 24 acres that you see on the screen on the right. That is the designated historic district, which, as I'm sure you all know, is a really important place to the heart and soul of Boulder, but really to the state and to the country as a whole, as being the last and the best preserved of what were many, many Chautauques that flourished in the United States during the first half of the 20th century. There are really only a couple left, and Colorado Chautauqua is the best. Now, what really started this project was the fact that Chautauqua has, for many years, been actively pursuing a program of sustainability and trying to make their buildings and the properties that they control on this land, which is owned by the city, as sustainable as possible. And several years ago, the Resilient Cities Project, which chose Boulder as one of its test cities, looked at Chautauqua and made recommendations as to how they might become a zero-carbon, sort of a microgrid, community within the city of Boulder. And so Chautauqua took steps upon those recommendations to approach the city with view to doing that. Now, it became apparent through those conversations that it didn't really, it didn't quite jive with some of the issues that were going on at Chautauqua as far as the various jurisdictions that are up there, because there is Parks and Recreation, as you know, there's open space, mountain parks, utilities, and then there are private cottagers as well. So CCA is one, the Colorado Chautauqua Association is one stakeholder up there, but they certainly don't run the show. And so the idea was to come up with a strategy that would plan for sustainability and a resilient place at Chautauqua in the context of a historic district. So we've been working towards that collaboratively with Chautauqua. And the strategy, the idea is that the strategy will be a model of sustainability and resilient practices for the community and historic districts around the country. So that's really the charter. There is a charter, there is a fairly well-designed, and I think articulate, statement of purpose for this place and for the project as a whole. So we're working towards doing this in a way that collaboratively works with the Colorado Chautauqua Association, which is a not-for-profit and not part of the city. We don't typically do this, so a plan like this doesn't fit into our typical planning process. So just anticipating a question that Harmon, a question that Harmon asked at the last meeting, and actually yesterday during the agenda meeting, where would this plan fit into the city's, you know, various plans? And looking at the Fire Master Plan, you saw all the many plans that Boulder has adopted. We're not sure, but I think probably what would make most sense is that this would be part of, A, Chautauqua's master plan, and as well, it would somehow be attached to the lease agreement and those agreements that have been negotiated and renegotiated with Chautauqua since its establishment in 1896. So we're not quite sure exactly how that works, but we'll be figuring that out. So the project is split into three steps. And the first step is to identify vulnerabilities and opportunities up at Chautauqua, specifically as they relate to changes that are occurring with the climate. Obviously, Chautauqua is kind of unique in that it is on three sides, surrounded by wildlands, and then it has a, you know, very distinct urban interface as well. And what it's, what Chautauqua itself is, is a camp-like sort of place. It still really retains that character. So as well as that, it's, you know, it's got a pretty steep grade, so there are drainage problems that have been certainly identified since the place was established. But the idea of this project is to look at the vulnerabilities and come up with solutions to mitigate those vulnerabilities over the long term, in the hope that the place will be protected. And as part of that, too, the sustainability piece really comes out of a desire to line the CCAs and Chautauqua as a whole's values, I guess, with the city's values in terms of climate action. So whether that happens at the same time as what the rest of the city's doing, or it does it on a slightly different schedule, is to be determined. But the idea is, through the vulnerabilities assessment, to find out what the issues are up there, in a really objective way, without trying to solve or come up with solutions. First, you want to really identify what all the issues are up there. So with that in mind, and I have to apologize for not getting you this in advance, but it really wasn't finalized until just a couple of days ago, and we posted it on the website today. But the vulnerabilities assessment is, the final draft is essentially finished, and I handed a couple of copies out to you at the meeting tonight. I'm sorry, it's a 62-page document and not really giving you time to digest. There's a lot in there. But the hope is this evening that I can just go over the high points, and then subsequent to that, you can react to what I'm going to talk to you about tonight. And I have some questions as well, general questions about the assessment.
James, just, I'm assuming that we, as an open invitation for us to email you questions or thoughts later after this, is there a time limit or horizon for that? Do you need feedback in a certain time range?
You know, yes, I think it would be, it would be good to have them in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Because this is the sort of stepping-off point to options development. And the slide on the screen actually shows the vulnerabilities assessment as really being the datum from which the options development's going to occur.
Great, thanks.
And so, yes. That's a good question, thanks. So, yeah, that's where we are right now, and going into the second step of the project, which is options development. So what the consultants have done, and this has been put together by Resilient Analytics, as well as a consultant who's done a lot of work nationwide with historic properties and resilience, is to take a systems approach to the identification and assessment of the place. So it sort of breaks down Chautauqua into a variety of systems. Infrastructure system, which is stormwater, water distribution, power distribution, communications, et cetera. The transportation system, which of course is the physical infrastructure that supports transportation and vehicular traffic. The neighborhood system, which is adjacent neighborhoods, as well as the Chautauqua neighborhood itself, and constitutes the historic demographic component of the place, as well as the community identity and cohesion. The economic system, because Chautauqua is actually a, has developed into a pretty robust economic engine for the city of Boulder. The ecological system, and of course, because it is bordered on three sides by wildlands, the ecological implications are pretty intense. But as well, this place has really transformed over the last 100 years from a high prairie, high-desert environment to a man-made cultural landscape with a lot of trees that were never really there. So it's a very different place than it was historically. And then a cultural system, representing the cultural system that both influences and reflects the city. So that really has to do with the national historic landmark and that value to the city and the community as a whole. And then finally, the contributing and the non-contributing resources of the built environment, which includes the structures, the buildings, and objects at Chautauqua. So as I alluded to before, there are a number of jurisdictional issues on this 24-acre portion of land, which constitutes the historic district with the CCA, Parks and Rec, open space, mountain parks, utilities, and then Excel having the utilities running through there, as well as 40-some cottage owners that privately own the buildings. So in a small, a very small area, you've got a number of different people who are making decisions. So part of the, and I'd say a fairly large piece of this project, is to try and align everybody's goals, so that people are moving in the same direction. There have been instances in the past where that hasn't been the case, and that's caused some problems. So I'll just go over very quickly a summary of the vulnerabilities assessment and some of the findings. And what they do, none of these are a real surprise, but I think they validate what we knew or what we suspected, but also I think they provide some pretty good data to demonstrate what the actual issues are. But the NHL district is facing significant threats from projected climate change. Vulnerabilities from heat, fire, wind, increased precipitation, as well as increased energy demand as a result of rising temperatures are putting a lot of pressure on the place, and this is going to continue. The scenarios resulting from the change in each of these environmental factors project increased damage to the infrastructure supporting the district. And in the report, it really does highlight the vulnerability of the electrical system that's there. Many of the poles look as though they might date back to the beginning of Chautauqua, and some of the lines that run over those poles, too, are very old. So that is, that is a vulnerability, and there are potential fire risks associated with that. At the same time, as it gets hotter, especially during the summer months, there is a desire to cool the buildings up there, which puts an increased load on that very aging and inadequate infrastructure. As well, the roads, pathways, drainage swales, and ecological features are at risk. And then, as I mentioned before, the multiple jurisdictional authorities that are operating up there sometimes work at cross purposes, and this has caused problems in the past. And then, of course, the increasing use of Chautauqua, which has really dramatically risen in the last decade. So I think I've seen numbers of something around a million visitors to Chautauqua a year, which is pretty incredible for such a small place. They're not all visiting that 24 acres, they're using it as the gateway to go to open space, but nonetheless, the traffic crosses through there. And that puts a lot of pressure on the infrastructure and the place as a whole. So in the report, there's a summary of the vulnerability assessment findings, including projected drought events, which are going to become a lot more intense over the course of the next 30 or 40 years. Fire, of course, and we heard from the fire chief about some of the vulnerabilities that the city has as a whole, but Chautauqua, I think, is particularly vulnerable, again, because of its location and the way fire would travel from the west and sweep over that place. Most of the historic buildings are wood, they're very old, they're very dry, and it just takes a spark or two, and those buildings can go up. As well, drainage on the property, because there's a 200-foot net change in grade from baseline to the top of the district. So that's a pretty steep grade. The 2013 floods demonstrated, you know, how the water really gets out of control when it runs across that place. So a lot of the focus in terms of thinking about options is ways to better move the water across that property and do it in a way that doesn't require a great deal of engineering or upset to the, you know, to the landscape or the historic resources. And I mentioned, again, the infrastructure and the power system, which is pretty inadequate. Now, one of the things that's, I think, really helpful about the vulnerabilities assessment is we asked the consultants to put together a ranking of the identified vulnerabilities. So they're broken down into short, medium, and long-term, and then high, medium, and low risk. So with that, we've got a pretty good idea of what some of the short-term high risks are and the longer-term low, medium, and high risks. That'll be helpful in terms of planning for the future. As well, the assessment identifies broad opportunities up there, including sustainable and resilient practices that the CCA has already instituted up there, as well as the city agencies that work up there. Community involvement, which is a huge opportunity. The idea of, and development of onsite or offsite renewable power generation, this is something that Chautauqua is very interested in doing, and perhaps designing a place where all of the electricity that is used up there can be generated onsite through solar and perhaps other ways. Now, there is a kind of a conflict there, because it's a historic district, so you might not want to festoon all the buildings with solar panels or necessarily put, you know, solar panels on the ground either. So it's a way of at least identifying what that need is. There's also the infrastructure issues associated with doing that, because right now, it wouldn't really make sense. And then, of course, the ownership of that, those utilities right now is Excel. That may well be changing in the next few years, but at least it's something that's identified, and that will be part of the analysis and recommendations that hopefully will be made. And then finally, the governance and jurisdiction, as well as potentially having been problematic at times, I think it really does represent, and the vulnerabilities assessment identifies this as really being an opportunity to align and use the various agencies that operate up there to work collaboratively together towards the same end. So I think you saw that. So I'll just go over the project steps again. We're on kind of a fast track with this project, and this has to do, I think, with a couple of things. But primarily, I think CCA would really like to see the project finished in a fairly short timeline. Now, what we are really trying to do is engage the public at the same time. We haven't done a great deal of outreach to this point, because it's been primarily data collection. The next step, this Phase Two, the next couple of months, we'll be doing considerable amount of public outreach and engagement with the public to, and identified stakeholders, to find out what they think about some of the identified options, which will be then hopefully developed into the final strategy, which we're planning to bring back to you in April of this year, and then ultimately to the City Council. So I've put a couple of questions up there. I understand that, having not been able to really review this, they may not be very easy to answer right now. But I guess perhaps these questions, which ask for comments on the work so far, the issues topics not addressed, and suggestions for options development, you could certainly give us feedback on via email. And we do have a website, which is pretty live, and we're going to be updating it on a weekly basis now, as this project starts to gain momentum and we do the public outreach. So the URL is up there, and certainly, if you have questions, please contact me directly.
Great. Great presentation, thanks, James. And no sweat about getting that to us late, it's all good. But in light of the fact that none of us have read it, we could ask lots and lots of probing questions, and a lot of those answers are probably solved by answering, by reading the document. So instead of asking a ton of questions, if you have any high-level questions or big concerns that you think might not be in here, maybe this is a good time to ask them, and then just know that we can follow up with James. And if we need to have James come back for a discussion of this, we could do that to you at another meeting.
Can I ask a question about if something is in here? Is there, is there discussion in the draft about what the implications of the CCA governance issues are, or is that completely separate?
You know, there, it's identified, but it's not really, there's not an analysis of those issues. You know, I think that there has been a lot of progress that's been made in the last several years with the guiding principles for place management up there, which this is sort of part of, well, it really is part of that. So it identifies that, I think, as the options are developed, that's probably going to be one of the, one of the issues that we'll be grappling with a bit.
Okay, thanks.
Cool. I guess I've got one quick question, which is, just, James, did you find, when you went through this, were there any surprises for you or things that were particularly game-changing? It seems like it's all fairly, like, just from the read I've gotten during the presentation, like, not surprising.
Yeah. You know, I think it validated what we thought. I think what, what really struck me was the state of the infrastructure up there. And I know we have that citywide, and it's, I think, a function of the climate here. The power, the power infrastructure is really in need of help. You know, the wind, when it starts to blow some of the bigger lines and they start to arc, that can cause some really major problems. But as well, there are, like, power lines running through trees and, like, hanging on people's roofs, and that's an obvious fire hazard. So that was, that was a surprise to me, just the extent of that. But then also, the state of the roads are really, really bad up there, and they get worse sort of by the week with the freeze and thaw and just the drainage and the grade. So those were kind of the most obvious things to me that came out of this.
It seems kind of odd, but it actually is really parallel to what we discovered when we were doing work on the Ponderosa project. And a lot of the same issues arose for kind of the same reasons, you know, relatively seasonal or, like, lightly insulated buildings, old infrastructure, stuff like that. So I think Kurt Ferdinand has some good strategies he could share about how to re-electrify that kind of a place. There's probably some corollaries there.
I think the, 10 years ago, there was really no air conditioning up at Chautauqua, and now there's, many of the cottages, if not most of them, have some sort of air conditioning. And in the summer, when they're all running at the same time, you know, it's really drawing a lot of power, so that's taxing the infrastructure. It's just not made for that, you know, that extent of draw. So, yeah, that's, something's going to have to happen. And Chautauqua, I think, has approached the city many times over the years to bury those lines for that very, very reason, but, you know, it's not the city's responsibility, it's Excel still, and it's very expensive to bury lines. And in terms of aesthetics, too, while you get rid of the power lines, those poles have been there since the beginning. So that's one of the things that the vulnerabilities assessment sort of talks about, is in 1898, there were blight posts up there, some of them are still there. Taking them down, yeah, it would look better, but is that a historic feature of Chautauqua? And if you bury them, then you're putting these transformers on the landscape, too. So that would be a change to the landscape. But I think overall, it would, it would be a benefit to the place.
Cool. David, you had a...
Yeah. I just wanted to point out that, I think it was two and a half years ago, maybe it was only one and a half years ago, but I came to the tour that you, the Landmarks Board, put together before the annual awards up at Chautauqua. And just wanted to give a shout-out, that was really useful in giving a visual to a lot of these things. And I remember, the gentleman who gave the tour was...
Jeff Mednick.
Jeff, he was very knowledgeable, knows every inch of that property, and he pointed out those drainage swales. I remember that very distinctly, because they're actually historic, they're made, they're made out of these big stones, but they're, you know, they need a special kind of maintenance, and so it's pretty interesting to see that and realize, yeah, we have to keep these wonderful, these wonderful drainage conduits, but they have to be specially maintained. So it's interesting to see, and I guess, I guess I hope that, I think the challenge is going to be how this, where this funding all gets with all the complexities, right?
It's going to come down, I think, to, yeah, resources, because it, taking steps to do many of these things is going to cost money. I mean, the swales is a good example. Lots of them need to be rehabilitated, but it's really expensive to do it properly. You can just, like... You can just like pave them and, you know, with concrete, that would be a cheap and easy way to do it, but it would have a really major effect on the historic fabric. Also, there's been discussion about maybe making them into, when they're not draining, sort of sidewalks that you could walk on. But that would change the appearance as well. And as it is, there's so many more people walking up there, and they walk in the swales and twist their ankles. So, yeah. So that would become a...
Six-minute response time.
Yeah. There's a fire station not too far.
Any other questions, folks? Are we good?
Very interesting.
Cool. Thanks a lot, James.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Do we need to do a calendar check, debrief, anything?
No, just a reminder that we have a, our 20th meeting, our February 20th meeting is canceled, and we will meet on the 27th. I think everyone's going to be here.
Yep.
So thank you for your responses about March 9th. I'm just waiting on one more board member, that's it. So we're good?
Cool. Thank you. Thanks, Andy. David, you have...
Did I just mention that tomorrow night, we're having, we're actually accelerating the Use Table Subcommittee work at the request of staff? They're trying to get that, the Subcommittee's input completed within the next couple, three months, so that they can start the full public engagement. I think it's because of increased interest from City Council. So tomorrow night, we're having a meeting, and then two weeks, and every couple of weeks after that for a little while, so. And we're holding them here, so that we can spread out stuff. It was fun to meet at all the little cafes around town, but it's becoming a little bit of a challenge, hearing each other and not getting distracted. So we'll wrap it up here.
There's crumbs everywhere.
There's crumbs.
Still super informative, though, I really enjoyed doing that.
All the dates and locations are on the webpage.
Yep, they're all there, and, yeah, it's good stuff.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This issue we'll bring to the table, animal rights and animal welfare.